Thank you. City of University Heights City Council meeting, January ninth, two thousand and twenty-four. I call the meeting to order. Some people are at the community center and some people are on Zoom because we're having a lovely snowstorm tonight. All five councilor present. First of all, I want to start with, to begin the meeting with a moment of silence to remember all the victims, staff and families at the Perry Iowa Middle School and High School. So a moment of no of silence. Thank you. And to begin, we'll have swearing in of the current city council by the city attorney Steve Ballard.
Thank you. So those elected officials, if you would please raise your right hand and repeat after me. Date your name.
Louise Fromm.
Hi Stephanie Gahn.
I Tim Schroder.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution.
Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Iowa.
And the Constitution of the State of Iowa.
And that I will faithfully and impartially.
And that I will faithfully and impartially.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
Discharge all the duties.
Discharge all the duties.
Of the office of. City council member or mayor.
Of the office of.
City council member or mayor.
In University Heights, Johnson County, Iowa.
In University Heights, Johnson County, Iowa.
As now or hereafter required by law.
As now or hereafter required by law.
Required by law.
Congratulations.
Thank you. Congratulations, everyone. Thank you, Steve. And now we'll go to approval of minutes. Mike sent around the minutes with his report. Are there any additions or corrections to the minutes? Hearing none, the minutes will be approved by unanimous consent. And then public input, any comments from the public? Mike, are there any members of the public in the office yet? No?
No, there are not.
Okay. Okay. We'll go on to mayor's report and the first thing is welcome John Olson here. He's here for the acceptance of the annual city examination report for the city council for FY twenty-three from Chronology and Olson. Hi, John, welcome.
Thank you, Mayor. As as Mayor Fromm mentioned, my name is John Olson. I am the owner of Chronology and Olson and we were hired to do a annual examination of the city of University Heights. Can everybody hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay. Purpose of the examination is to perform a check on the processes within the city rather than focusing on the receipts and dispersments. This is not a full audit that the city that has been performed. This is an annual examination of the city of University Heights looking at items that the state auditor requires. And unlike an audit, there is no materiality level. This means if we find any non-compliance, we're required to report a comment along with the recommendation. We're not allowed the professional judgment to determine a report comment as warranted. Everybody should have received a report in your in your council packet. It is a five-page report. The first one, first page is the listing of city officials. And the next three pages is our independent auditor's report on applying agreed-upon procedures. This provides no opinion or assurance on city operations. It provides detail of the procedures that we actually did. And on the last page are the detailed findings, recommendations. There are three of them and they're all they're all pretty minor non-compliance issues. First one is regarding segregation of duties, which that will always be a comment due to the staff size. The other one is on unclaimed property, which relates to the long outstanding checks that have not been cashed. And the third one was on bank reconciliations not being reviewed by a third party. This is something that can is that's something that can easily be fixed. Either a council member or somebody that doesn't do the bank reconciliations, review them monthly and sign off. That's it. It's a way to get the council more involved with the city and just kind of a check on the accounting function of the city because you because of your lack of staff. You don't have the budget to have all kinds of people in an accounting department. So you guys are doing doing what you can. Any questions?
I don't have any questions. Does anyone else? No questions, John.
All right. I would like to thank city personnel for their assistance during the examination. Everything went well. It's I always look forward to doing the University Heights examination.
Thank you so much, John, for your assistance.
You're welcome.
Take care. You can stay for the meeting or you can leave, whatever you.
I'll stay for some, so see what's going on.
Very good. Thank you. You know, counsel, I was looking at his recommendations and as John said, I thought we could try to have the mayor or the council or maybe even the police chief try to do a monthly review of the of the.
Technical difficulties.
Maybe lose.
On my screen, it looks like we lost almost everybody.
I only see us four.
Yeah.
I can hear my kids in there freaking out. So apparently they must have lost their internet as well. I froze up and mine came back on.
Texted Louise. She said, I'll have to go into Zoom again. But I don't think we have Mike. I if he's the host, I guess I don't know.
I didn't know you were on there, Steve. I only show four. Oh, there you are. You are. You were on the four. Never mind.
Yeah.
Not that you're not important.
I'm afraid they all lost power or something.
Yeah.
It like it looked like it went dark in her house and then.
Yeah, I saw my Christmas tree lit up in the background or something.
Yeah.
The great tree must have fell down on the power lines or something.
Now Louise says she's going to the city office now. And tell her it's.
She lose power or just internet?
Mike asks if we're hearing him talking. I said, no, can you hear us? Get off and get back on. I guess I'm not really sure how that works.
Who's the provider for the office? Internet provider.
Hey Louise. I heard I got your text in that way. And the only reason I called, it's not just you. Mike was at Mike is off. It's Ryan and Doug and yeah, I mean, Ryan, Doug and John. Yeah, no, it's not. So I don't know if going up to the city office does does you much good. I might Mike, Mike's. Yeah. Yeah. Well, I think. Okay, now. No, no, I don't think you should because I'm on my Zoom and it looks like you're coming back on.
Booted me.
Okay, and Tim's coming back on.
Okay.
And I'm assuming.
Name is. Okay, I gotta start video. Wow, we're having these power. Okay, let me turn you off here. I'm like, I was saying my lights are flashing. And I thought that can't just be happening to me. Maybe. But.
Happened here too.
Where's yours doing that too, Tim?
Yeah.
Oh, okay, good. I mean, you know, I want company. So crazy. So anyway, yeah, so maybe we can get through this meeting. And I don't see Mike yet.
Stephanie's gone too, isn't she?
It looks like Mike's coming on, maybe.
Oh.
Lisa.
Oh, Lisa, sorry.
Wow, I thought I'm I'm gonna get in the car and drive up there.
Stephanie said she can't get online.
Yeah. So oh, I see UH is coming in and Tim is spinning around. There we go.
All right, we're back.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Sorry, we.
We had the same I many of us had the same problem.
It Stephanie's not back yet, however.
You're right.
She might have to use her phone and turn on turn off Wi-Fi maybe.
Are you gonna text her, Mike?
I'm trying to right now.
Thank you. I don't want to. But I think even without Stephanie, we can keep moving on with a form of four. Yeah, I'm worried we're not gonna.
Yeah.
Get done. And so we're up to mayor's report. So Steve, do we have to have a simple vote to accept the annual city examination report by the council? Okay, so I need a motion to accept the annual city examination report for FY twenty-three from Chronology and Olson.
All motion.
Okay. Tim, thank you, Tim. As the motion, is there a second?
I'll second.
Second by Lisa. Thank you. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And anybody opposed? Okay, no one opposed and we don't have Stephanie yet. So, okay, thank you very much. Then I sent around a written mayor's report with council assignments, appointments. But I want to start with special thanks to the residents that I listed for their volunteer time and talents by serving on the following committees for many years. And that was Randall Atchison, who served on the Board of Adjustment and Sean Vissera, who was on the tree board and Kathy Belgum for serving on the tree board. Thanks to them. Appreciate it so much. And then I have a mayor's MVP and for many years, once again, it's Scott and Carol Ann Christensen of the University Heights Garden Club. Because everyone knows what a masterpiece the garden is every year. I get so many compliments from people driving by who don't live in University Heights besides the people of University Heights. And also they all do this with donations. And so remember that if you want to give some money to the garden club. And I want to thank Carol Ann and Scott. And then the council assignments are listed and then we have appointments and does anybody have any questions about anything? I'll go on with appointments or Board of Adjustment. There's Mary Ann Nelson and there's a tree board is Pamela Vela Corte and on zoning commission where I'm reappointing Pete Damiano. We have a resolution that Steve sent consideration of resolution twenty-four oh one ratifying the mayor's appointments to the tree board, Board of Adjustment and Zoning Commission. Is there a motion?
All motion.
Motion by Lisa. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Okay. Mike. You know who seconded it?
Yes.
Okay, very good. Okay, so is there any discussion? Okay, roll call vote.
Ah, I'm not with all my stuff. Stephanie is here, but I don't see her yet. I'll pass for Stephanie right now. Herbald. Moore. Schroder.
Aye.
Swales.
Aye.
And I don't see Stephanie, but motion carries four zero with Stephanie not here yet.
Okay, thank you. Let's see. Oh, I wanted something else in the mayor's report. I applied for the Mid-American Community Link Grant. You know, they will give five hundred dollars to a small city. And I spoke with Chief Troy and it would be very helpful for them to have some monies for some of the community policing projects and events that they do. And you know, they pass things out to the kids and all. And then a small amount of money will be used for like the farmer's market. So that's always good to get that check and we thank Mid-American Energy for that. Let's see. We go on to legal report and Steve. Does anybody have any questions for Steve? I think they're all pretty self-explanatory. They're mostly items that he had to put in front of the council. Any questions for Steve? Okay. Thank you. We'll move to the city clerk report. Mike, you sent your report around.
I don't have anything else to add.
Okay. Any questions for Mike? Okay, thank you. And then we have the treasures report. And I see that John Brown sent around the warrants this afternoon. Did everyone have a chance to review the warrants? I think that was yes, right? Okay. Is there any objection to paying the bills?
Oh, we have we have two to add.
Oh, well, there's. Okay, two to add. Okay, go.
One, one.
One's a bank. That one's a bank statement.
Sorry. That's why John's a treasurer. I can't tell the difference between a statement and a bill.
I just have I just have a century leak in the amount of one hundred and thirteen dollars and fifty-eight cents to add. That's all.
Okay. Thank you. So with that addition, are there any objections to pay in the warrants? Hearing none, the warrants will be paid by unanimous consent. John, I know you started the process for signature cards, correct?
Yes, yes, indeed.
Okay, so that should be done probably this week or next because you know, right, John? Okay, very good.
Yes, I mean, one institution is can do things electronically. Another institution will require people stopping by and signing in person.
Okay, very good. And that really involves the mayor and the mayor pro tem.
Correct.
Okay, so thank you, John, for that process. Okay, so we'll go down to police chief report. And chief, you sent around a written report today. What did you? What did you want to talk about, if anything?
I'd just like to point out along those community. Policing, community event, things that.
Go sit by Lisa. The camera's not the camera's not moving tonight.
I'd just like to comment on the community policing and the giving back and using some of the funds, as you already discussed. Officer Jads and participating in the shop with the top event. We did not contribute any money to it because we did not have it in our budget, but we basically we go ahead and do it for advantage. And though I just like to point that out and also under kind of OUP items, because I represent the city on that is OUP South was going to have a meeting. So I walked away from my dates. There's some items that need to be discussed that that are mentioned in part on my report, but the sixth and the seventh have both been proposed. February sixth and seventh have both been proposed as possible meeting dates. We would meet here at the community center. And I just wanted to check with you, Mayor and council and clerk to see if there's any conflicts on those dates that we should avoid.
I I don't. I don't have anything. It's the sixth and seventh of February, right?
We would not meet both of those, but those have been both been floated as dates. And before I respond, I just knew knowing that we're having this meeting, thought I'd check here.
Yeah. Thank you for checking.
Okay, I'll get back to them. And that's all I have unless there are any questions.
Okay. We have consideration of resolution twenty-four oh two, approve an initial installation, implementation and locations of cameras, vehicle sensors and signage to implement the city's automatic automated traffic enforcement ATE system and approving the chief of police to determine the exact deployment of ATE system components throughout the city as provided in ordinance number two, five, two. Okay, is there a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Motion by Steph. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Second by Lisa. Okay, discussion. Okay, we're ready for a roll call vote.
Gahn.
Aye.
Herbald.
Aye.
Moore.
Aye.
Schroder.
Aye.
Swales. Motion carries five zero.
Thank you. We'll go on to consideration of resolution number twenty-four oh three, approving and authorizing the mayor to sign a pole attachment contract for a municipal camera system with Mid-American Energy company to allow placement, attachment and operation of cameras and related equipment. And what is that word aperture tenses? What's that word? A perten. I don't know what that is. What is that? To implement and operate the city's automatic traffic enforcement system. Some other attachment. Must be. Okay, so that ordinance is before you. Is there a motion?
I'll make the motion.
Okay, motion by Tim. Is there a second?
Nope, that was Doug.
That was Doug.
That was Doug.
The other one.
Sorry.
Happy to second it.
You. Okay, thank you for seconding it. Okay, any discussion?
The use of the poles, is that indefinite or is there a time limit for Mid-American?
It provides for termination provisions, Doug. So it doesn't. It doesn't end, you know, either site can say on proper notice, you know. We're gonna put we're gonna take them down or we want you to take them down.
Okay.
Okay, any other questions or discussion? Okay, ready for a roll call vote.
Herbald.
Aye.
Moore. Schroder.
Aye.
Swales.
Aye.
Gahn.
Aye.
Motion carries five zero.
Thank you. Stephanie, did you have anything to add to this? Police report.
I don't, but thank you.
Thank you. We'll go to finance. Welcome, Nick, to finance. Nick, do you have something you want to talk about a little bit?
Nope, no report today. Thank you.
Okay, thanks very much. I know that Steve Cool is planning on coming to the next meeting and I know he's planning to meet with Nick.
Yeah, we have it set up for Friday.
Oh, is that Friday? Okay. And I he he didn't want to waste council's time if he didn't really. He didn't really have a lot of the information yet. And so he'll and so that's great. Thanks, Nick. We'll go to Streets and Sidewalks and Engineers Report. Hi, Ryan.
Hi there. Thanks, Mayor. I don't have a whole lot to add to my written report. I think I'll just keep it brief. We, you know, last month we talked pretty well in depth on the Melrose Complete Street proposal for design for design work. So there is a resolution before council tonight. I guess I would just say I didn't receive any specific questions from any council members or anyone in the last month. So unless there's any questions on on that item, council would consider resolution twenty-four oh four, which is approving and authorizing the mayor to sign a professional services agreement with Shive Hattery for the Melrose Avenue Complete Street Improvements Project.
Okay. That resolution twenty-four oh four is before the council. Is there a motion?
All motion.
Motion by Stephanie. Is there a second?
Second it.
I see Doug's hand. Thank you. Okay, discussion. Okay, we're ready for a roll call vote.
Moore. Schroder.
Aye.
Swales.
Aye.
Gahn.
Aye.
Herbald. Motion carries five zero.
Thank you. Now you had another vote that Ryan put down in his report about the twenty-three Monroe Street improvements, consideration of change order number one.
Yeah, so hopefully it was clear in the written report, but just to briefly kind of go over that one also. So the project got delayed from from the fall of two thousand and twenty-three to the spring of two thousand and twenty-four due to a conflict with the the gas main along Monroe Street. So Mid-American Gas relocated that gas main this fall, but it was delayed enough that we did not start the roadway work. So it required some modifications to the contract, the contract dates that the contractor is required to adhere to. So that's one thing that's in that change order. And then also So that's one thing that's in that change order. And then also. With the, uh, annual increase to concrete prices, the, uh, concrete contractor requested, uh, a lump sum. Uh, one thousand dollars be added, uh, line item to account for. Uh, inflation and, and additional costs from going from twenty twenty-three to twenty twenty-four pricing, so.
And I believe that's only a one point five percent increase from your report, correct?
Yeah, it's, it's just under, uh, yeah, I didn't, I didn't note that. I sent that separate to, to you and Doug, but. Um, it, that one thousand dollars, uh, is, is less than one point five percent of an increase to the, uh, the total value of the, the concrete. Line items on, on the contract, so. See, it's, it seems fairly reasonable.
So I need a motion for, um, consideration of the twenty twenty-three Monroe Street improvements change order number one. So moved. That was.
Nick.
Nick, thank you, Nick. Uh, is there a second?
I'll second.
Second by Lisa. Okay, um, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Is anyone opposed? Okay, motion carries five zero. Um. Doug, did you have anything to add today?
Uh, just a report on the street. It's, uh, it's really bad out. That, that's all I got.
Best report. Oh, my goodness. Uh. Building zoning and sanitation is next and that's Tim Schroder. Tim, do you have anything to add today?
Nothing to add. You mentioned, I don't know which half of the city's picking up tomorrow, but. You said half the city will be picked up tomorrow, so you already passed that along.
Thank you. And that he means, uh, refuse and recycling.
Yep.
And so, very good. And e-government, Lisa, you sent around a written report, uh. Does anyone have any questions for Lisa? Thought that was a good idea to suggest to citizens to do that sign up. To encourage them to sign up. Have you been getting very many people?
We have had a number of people that have signed up recently. Um, and I was hoping maybe someday. The next time we do the rental permit, which will be a while, we can add that, but. Like the Airbnb down the street, they never know when they're gonna change, but then that's the person that comes to clean up the trash.
Thank you. Are there any announcements?
Um, just two quick ones that I didn't put into the clerk report. Um. Next Monday is caucus night and University Heights Republicans will be caucusing here. At the community center. Um, University Heights Democrats, I believe, are caucusing at West High. Um, but that's coming up on the calendar.
Thank you very much. Anybody else have any announcements?
I can think of, I should have brought in my report is the, uh, the fire hydrants being covered up with snow with all this snow. Uh, maybe we should just talk about the adopt a fire hydrant. Campaign or at least be cognizant of it. Whoever you live close enough to one. Pitch in.
That's a good idea to remind people since we got a significant amount of snow in one swoop.
Yeah.
Uh, I know my husband did. He asked me if he could go ahead and do the fire hydrant by us and I said, you may. So if anybody's so inclined to do the fire hydrant, that's great.
It'll be a block ice here in a few days, so sooner the better.
Oh, good point. Thank you for that reminder. Is there, is there any objection to adjournment? Hearing none, the meeting's adjourned by unanimous consent. Thanks, everyone. Happy New Year.